I did not know that we will have to preach the gospel of the Lord, but we will do our best. One of the prophets said in the book of Ephesians, "To preach the gospel of the Lord and understand what we are doing." So, the book of Ephesians, verse 32, so far, we follow the prophet's verse 30. 30, as we continue, we will talk about the book of Ephesians, it says, "God gave gifts to men. The Lord gave them to the people of Israel, for only one apostle, who was the one who preached the gospel of Christ." This is what we are saying, "He did not preach to anyone who was a pagan. And even if he did, he did not preach to anyone else. He said, 'Because of his faith, of his worship, of his worshipers, you will not be able to preach this in the Bible.' The fact is, the fact is, the fact is, that God has given them the gospel of the Lord." He said, "If you preach this, you will be cursed. And if you preach to anyone, you will be cursed, even to the people of Israel. Because of the sin of the world, you will not be able to preach." This is what we say, "Forgive me." And when we say, "Forgive me," then we say, "Let us be humble." Even if the world is going to curse you, even if you preach to the world, even if you preach to the world, then we say, "Let us be humble." Because we are not in competition. Neither are we comparing one to the other." That is why we say, "Let us be humble." We say, "But this is the home church fellowship." If you want to preach the home church fellowship, then you can say, "I want to preach to the world." This is what we say, "Let us preach to the world." So, we say, "It is wrong to preach, because we are not in competition. Neither are we comparing one to the other." That is why we say, "Let us be humble." So, we say, "Let us preach the gospel of the Lord." And when we say, "Let us preach the gospel of the Lord," we preach, we preach, we preach to the world. And we say, "Because of the sin of the world, for example, of the sin of the world." When we say, "Let us preach the gospel of the Lord," then we say, "The life of the Lord is cursed." Because we say, "Let us preach the gospel of the Lord." It is wrong to preach to anyone else. The fact is, the fact is, the fact is. And we say, "Because of the fact of the world, the fact is, the fact is, the fact is, that if you preach the gospel of the world, even if you preach to anyone who is a pagan, who is a pagan, who is a pagan, then that person who is a pagan, who is a pagan, who is a pagan, even if you preach to him, it is wrong." Because we say, "Let us preach the gospel of the Lord." Because if the world is going to curse you, if you preach to the world, if you preach to the world, if you preach to the world, then we say, "Let us preach the gospel of the world." "Be faithful in what God has committed in your hands." Here, the world is going to curse you. Because of this, the world is going to curse you. The world is going to curse you. And if you curse the world, then you will curse the world. Because we say, "Let us preach the gospel of the Lord," because of the sin of the world. We say, "Let us preach the gospel of the world," because of the sin of the world. And we say, "Because of this, we preach the gospel of the world." Because we say, "Let us preach the gospel of the Lord." Because of this, we preach the gospel of the world. Because of this, we preach the gospel of the world. Because of this, we preach the gospel of the world. Because this is what we say, "Let us preach the gospel of the Lord." Even if you preach to the world, because of this, we preach the gospel of the world. That is why we say, "Forgive me." So, we say, "Let us preach the gospel of the Lord." This is what the world says, "Forgive me." And we say, "Let us preach the gospel of the Lord." We say, "Let us preach the gospel of the Lord." Because if the world is going to curse you, you will curse the world. And if you curse the world, then you will be cursed. So, why we say, "Let us preach the gospel of the Lord?" When we read verse 12. Sorry, when we read verse 10. "And by the time he descended, it was the same also that ascended, far above all heavens, that he might feel all things. And he gave some apostles, some prophets, some evangelists, some pastors, and teachers." We will cover the verse 14. Or we will cover the verse 15. Because we will read the verse 11. So, we focus on the verse 11. That is why we say, "Let us preach the gospel of the Lord." Because we say, "Let us preach the gospel of the Lord." Because we say, "Let us preach the gospel of the Lord." The gospel of the Lord is the gospel of the world. We preach the gospel of Christ. Because of this, we say, "We will preach to anyone who is a pagan, 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 and even if you preach to anyone, it is wrong." Whether you preach to him, whether you preach to him, whether you preach to him. In that way, you will be cursed. You need to pay the cost and the price. The gospel of the Lord is the same, because of the sin of the world. It is wrong to preach, because of the sin of the world. Because the world is preaching, because of this, it is wrong. Genesis to the Revelation. It is wrong to preach, because of the sin of the world. Because of this, the fact of the world is what we say, "The world is a pagan, who 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 is a pagan, even if he is a pagan, who 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 is a pagan, because of this, the fact is, the fact is, the fact is, even if you preach to anyone, you will be cursed, even to the people of Israel." Because of this, you will be cursed. Because of this, you will be cursed. Because of this, we say, "Let us preach the gospel of the Lord." The fact is, the fact is, the fact is, that if you preach to anyone, it is wrong. Because of this, the fact is, the fact is, the fact is, you will be cursed. Because of this, we say, "Let us preach the gospel of the Lord." The world is a pagan, who is a pagan, who is a pagan. And even if you preach to anyone, you will be cursed. Because of this, we say, "Let us preach the gospel of the Lord." Because the world is a pagan, who 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 is a pagan, because of this, even if you preach to anyone, you will be cursed. Because of this, you will be cursed. Because of this, you will be cursed. Because of this, we say, "Let us preach the gospel of the Lord." Because of this, you will be cursed, even if you preach to anyone, you will be cursed. Because of this, you will be cursed, even if you preach to anyone, you will be cursed. Because of this, you will be cursed, even if you preach to anyone, you will be cursed. Because of this, you will be cursed, even if you preach to anyone, you will be cursed. Because we say, "Let us preach the gospel of the Lord." Because we say, "Let us preach the gospel of the Lord." Because even if we say, "Let us preach the gospel of the Lord," because of this, you will be cursed, even if you preach to him. Because we say, "Let us preach the gospel of the Lord." Because we say, "Let us preach the gospel of the Lord." Because we say, "Let us preach the gospel of the Lord." Because we say, "Let us preach the gospel of the Lord." Because we say, "Let us preach the gospel of the Lord." The fact is, the fact is, the fact is, even if you preach to anyone, it is wrong. Because of this, we say, "Let us preach the gospel of the Lord." And we say, "Let us preach the gospel of the Lord." Because of this, you will be cursed. Because of this, you will be cursed. Because of this, you will be cursed. Because even if you preach to anyone, it is wrong. Because of this, you will be cursed. 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 Because even if you preach to anyone, it is wrong. Because of this, you will be cursed. Because we say, "Let us preach the gospel of the Lord." The fact is, the fact is, the fact is, "Those who believe in Jesus Christ, who are cursed and who are baptized, and even if you preach to anyone, you will be cursed." So, even if you preach to anyone, it is wrong. Because of this, you will be cursed. 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 Because we say, "Let us preach the gospel of the Lord." Because we say, "Let us preach the gospel of the Lord." Because of this, you will be cursed. I don't know what you are saying. Excuse me. I don't understand. Mark chapter 16, verse 15. "And they said unto them, Go into the whole world, into the one, and preach the gospel unto every creature." So, it happens, the Lord said to them, "They turned off apostles, and preached the gospel of the Lord." And they said, "You, my apostles, who are my disciples." They said, "I am a pagan, who is preaching to you." They said, "I am a pagan, who is preaching to you." So, they said, "You, my apostles, who are my disciples." "And they said, 'I am a pagan, who is preaching to you.' 'I am a pagan, who is preaching to you.' And they said, 'Angry!' 'Yes, yes, yes! It is the apostles that have given that command.'" Because we say, "Verse 16." It is the same way. "He that believes, after being preached to by their apostles, and is baptized, shall be saved; and he that believes not shall be condemned, and shall be judged." You can read the book of John, chapter 3, verse 17. Verse 16, it says, "For God so loved the other that gave his only begotten son, that he shall ever shall believe." Because we say, "17," it is the same thing. It is the same thing, "He that believes, after being preached to by their apostles, and is baptized, shall be saved; and he that believes not shall be condemned, and shall be judged." I don't know what you are saying. Because you are saying, "Let us preach the gospel of the Lord." John 3, verse 16. "For God so loved the other that gave his only begotten son, that he shall ever believe in him shall not perish, but have everlasting life." Verse 17. "For God sent not his son with the word to condemn the one, but through the one, through him might be saved." 18, "He that believes on him is not condemned." Excuse me, verse 19. "He that believes on Jesus Christ is not condemned; but he that believes not is condemned already, because he has believed in the name of the only begotten son of God." So, I say, "Let us preach the gospel of the Lord." But it is the same thing. "Already you are condemned; simply because you have preached the gospel of Christ, you are already condemned." So, when the judgment day comes, even if you preach, even if you preach to him, the Lord will judge you. I don't know what you are saying. I don't know what you are saying. Verse 32, verse 34. John 3, 34, it is the same thing. "For he whom God has sent speaks the words of God; for God gives not the Spirit by measure unto him." 35, "The Father loves the Son, and has given all things into his hands. He that believes on the Son has everlasting life; and he that believes not on the Son shall not see life, but the wrath of God abides on him." I don't understand what you are saying. It says, "The fact is, the fact is, the fact is, because of this, you will be cursed." Because of this, you will be cursed. 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 The meaning of the word "abide" in another English, it is the same way, "Where do you live?" "I live in plot five, room number ten." So, basically, when you say, "Where do you live?", then you say, "Where do you abide?" Then you say, "Abide in plot 10, room number five." Meaning that the wrath of the Lord will be on you, because of this, you will be cursed. Because of this, you will be cursed. So, because of this, it is the same thing. Because of this, you will be cursed. 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 So, this person will not be judged, but already has been condemned. What do you mean, "condemned"? If you say, "Cursed," because of this, you will be cursed. Cursed means, the fact is, the fact is, the fact is. I say, "Let us preach the gospel of the Lord." If you say, "Cursed," because of this, you will be cursed. Because of this, you will be cursed. So, even if you preach, you will be cursed. Because of this, you will be cursed. Even if you preach, you will be cursed. Because even if you preach, you will be cursed. Anytime the president takes a signature, it is the same way. So, here, it is the same way, "Let us preach the gospel of the Lord." So, the Bible says, "He that believes not on the Son of God," John 3:18, "is already condemned." John 3, 34, 35, it is the same thing. "Because you believe not on the Son of God, already the wrath of God abides on you." Because of this, you will be cursed. Let's go back to Mark, because I want to record something. So, Mark chapter 16, verse 15. 15? Or chapter 17? Okay. There are more sorts of command. "And they said, 'I am a pagan, who is preaching to you.' 'I am a pagan, who is preaching to you.' 'And attack the Lord, and baptize him, and be cursed.' 'And do the same with the Lord, and condemn him.'" It is John, Mark chapter 16, verse 16. And then, 17, it is the same, "I am a pagan." 17, it is the same, "I am a pagan." It is the same way. "And this time shall follow them that believe. What does the word "Amen" mean? Is it a shout of the Father? Those that believe..." Who are these? "The people who have had the ghost of Jesus Christ." "What can scare you, who is a pagan? What can offend you, who is a Christian? The fact is, the fact is, the fact is, those that believe." And when you say, "Do you know you are a believer?" Just in case, it is hard, because of this, you will be cursed. "Oh, I am a pagan." And even if I am a pagan, I will be cursed. And we say, "Are you a believer or not?" "Are you a believer or not?" "And whether you believe or not." So, if you are a believer, if you are not a believer, to see, it is the same, "The fact is, the fact is, the fact is, because of this, you will be cursed. 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 So, the fact is, it is the same way. "The word 'Amen' means is a shout of the Father." So, meaning that you, as a believer, it is your responsibility to preach the gospel of Christ. That is what I am saying. Because of this, you will be cursed. Because of this, you will be cursed. Because of this, you will be cursed. Because if the world says, "It is your responsibility," then we say, "Even if you end up, you will be cursed." Because even if you preach, you will be cursed. Because even if you preach, you will be cursed. Because we say, "The fact is, the fact is, the fact is, because of this, you will be cursed. Because of this, you will be cursed. Never. Because of this, you will be cursed. Never. Because of this, you will be cursed. 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 Because we say, "Let us preach the gospel of the Lord." Because we say, "Let us preach the gospel of the Lord." Because of this, you will be cursed. 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 So, when we read the book of Ephesians, the fact of the world, "All of us have been given the responsibility to be witnesses of Jesus Christ." Because of this, no exception. Even if you preach to him, you will be cursed. Because we say, "Even if you preach, you will be cursed." Even if you preach, you will be cursed. Even if you preach, you will be cursed. Even if you preach, you will be cursed. And this is the same, "The fact is, the fact is, the fact is, Amen, you will be cursed. Already you will do the work of the Lord." Because of this, you will be cursed. When the time comes, you will be cursed. Because for now, the fact of the world is, you will be cursed. Because of this, we say, "Let us preach the gospel of the Lord." Because of this, you will be cursed. Because of this, you will be cursed. "Wait." "Because of this, you will be cursed." Because of this, you will be cursed. I don't know what you are saying. It is the same way, "Because of this, you will be cursed." Because of this, you will be cursed. So, it is the same, "I am a pagan." Because of this, it is the same, "Oh, to me." "Oh, to me." So, even if you preach to him, you will be cursed. Because of this, you will be cursed. The gospel of the Lord is what we say, "Let us preach the gospel of the Lord." "I am a pagan, who is a pagan, who is a pagan." "I am a pagan, who is a pagan, who is a pagan." Even if you preach to him, you will be cursed. "I am a pagan, who is a pagan, who is a pagan." I don't know what you are saying. Because of this, you will be cursed. So, the fact of the world, it is the same way. "As much as you say, 'The fight for ministry,' you are not exempted." "I am a pagan, who is a pagan, who is a pagan, who is a pagan, who is a pagan." Because of this, you will be cursed. So, because of this, we say, "There is a church that..." It is the same way, "There is a church that..." "Oh, because of this, you will be cursed." Because we say, "Let us preach the gospel of the Lord." Because of this, you will be cursed. Because of this, you will be cursed. Because the fact of the world, you have been gifted, and God has given you grace, and you are not working. You are not responding to the commandment of the scriptures. Because of this, we say, "Let us preach the gospel of the Lord." Because of this, you will be cursed. Anybody, even if you preach to anyone, who is a pagan, who is a Christian, who is a Christian, who is a Christian, you will be cursed. Because of this, 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 you will be cursed. Because the fact of the world is, we say, "Let us preach the gospel of the Lord." Because of this, we say, "Let us preach the gospel of the Lord." Because of this, you will be cursed. Because of this, you will be cursed. Because of this, we say, "Okay." Because we say, "Let us preach the gospel of the Lord." Because of this, you will be cursed. Because of this, you will be cursed. Because of this, you will be cursed. Okay, so, let us preach the gospel of the Lord. Because of this, you will be cursed. Imagine, the fact of the world. When you say, "Let us preach the gospel of the Lord." Because of this, you will be cursed. 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 Because even if you preach, you will be cursed. Even if you watch TV, even if you watch PS4, even if you watch games, even if you watch TV, even if you watch PS4, even if you watch games, even if you watch TV, even if you watch PS4, even if you watch games, even if you watch TV, even if you watch PS4, even if you watch games, even if you watch TV, even if you watch PS4, even if you watch games, even if you watch TV, even if you watch PS4, even if you watch games, "Anachesa, anachesa, anachesa, anachesa." "Anachesa." Do you understand what I am saying? "Anachesa, anachesa, anachesa." You will do this. You will do this. Because of this, you will be cursed. You will receive. Even if you preach, you will be cursed. Because of this, you will be cursed.
When you know what a priest is, you have to be a priest. You have to say eh 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 eh, if you don't, you will not be able to preach. What is the reason for preaching? Because of the fact that you don't preach anything. The same case in Africa. Mungu, everyone who is a priest, he has to do what he wants to do. And he has to do it. He thinks about what he wants to preach. And he will preach it. Then the man who says he wants to preach, he has to preach in front of the church and the apostles. And he will preach it. So, who is a priest? Who is a priest who is a pastor? And he has to go to the church. And he has to go to the church. He has to go to the house ministry. And yet, he has to preach to the people. Because of the fact that he has to preach to the church. He has to preach to the church. He has to preach to the church. And so, he has to preach to the church. 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 So, what is the motivating factor? He has to preach to the church. He says, "I don't want to preach." He says, "I don't want to preach." Then he has to preach to the church. 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 And that's why I said, "I don't want to preach." When a mother says she wants to preach, she says, "I don't want to preach." When a mother says she wants to preach, she says, "It is a prayer in front of the church." Even if she says, "I want to preach." The church has to preach to her. That's why I said. If she says, "I want to preach." Then she has to preach. The man who says he wants to preach, he has to preach. Hello? The church has to preach. The church has to preach. Who is a priest? He has to preach. That's why I said. Who is a priest? It is a prayer in front of the special. Don't preach to the church. Don't preach to the church. The church has to preach. It is a special prayer for the church. That's why I said. I said, "I don't want to preach." He has to preach to the church. He says, "Mother, what is it?" He says, "It is a prayer." It is a prayer because of the fact that the church has to preach. Because of the fact that the church has to preach. He has to preach to the church. He has to preach to the church. He has to preach to the church. That's why I said. So, first priority is prayer. Do you know what is a prayer? Prayer. When you have to preach, the mother says, "I want to preach." She 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 says, "I want to preach." And so, she says, "I want to preach." The church has to preach. The mother says, "Do you want to preach?" Because of the fact that the church has to preach. Or else, it will be a chicken. You have to preach. It is a prayer. The church has to preach. So, we have an accountability before God in the gifts in front of the people. So, last thing I said, last time I was in Syria, the man who is a priest. Because of the fact that a priest is in front of the church. Mungu, the church has to preach. He has to preach to the people. A priest is in front of the church. Because of the fact that apostolic ministry, when you preach, you have to preach. Because of the fact that you have to preach. When you have to preach, you have to preach to the church. When you preach, you have to preach. When you evangelize, you have to preach to Christ. When you preach to Christ. When you preach, you have to preach. And you have to preach to Christ. Because of the fact that you have to preach. You have to preach to the apostles. You have to preach to the apostles. And then, you have to preach to the church. You have to preach to the church. You have to preach to the church. Because of the fact that you have to preach. Because of the fact that you have to preach. Because of the fact that you have to preach. You have to preach to the church. When you preach, you have to preach to the church. Because of the fact that you have to preach. What is a prayer? When you have to preach to Paolo. But Paolo established the church of Ephesus. After that, the church of Ephesus. And the Romans, the Romans. They said, "Put the body of Christ in Ephesus in order." "For, you see, for, you see, for, elders." And so, the situation, and then, the apostles have to preach. They have to preach. The Romans, they have to preach to Paolo. They have to preach to the church. So, they have to preach to the church. So, they have to preach to the apostles. But because of the fact that they have to preach, there is no network or wifi. There is no mobile or YouTube. And so, they have to preach. Yet, they have to preach to the apostles. Because of the fact that the people, they have to preach. They have to preach to the church. But they have to preach to the church. And here, the church has to preach, is James, the son of Jesus Christ. In America, he was the first bishop of the Church of Jerusalem. And so, when you have to preach, there is James, the son of John. When you have to preach, it is the sons of thunder. And there is James, stepbrother of Jesus Christ. James, the son of John, he was the first one. He preached to the church. But Stephen, James is a hero. But James, the son of Jesus Christ, he is in the book of James. And he is the son of Jesus. He is in Jerusalem. When you have to preach, guidance and advices, you have to preach. You have to preach. And then, you have to preach to Jerusalem. You have to preach to the church. And that is James. So, because of the fact that the people, the apostolic order, the apostolic order, in front of the church. When you have to preach, you have to preach. You have to preach to the church. Yet, the apostles have to preach. They have to preach to the church. They have to sacrifice. When they have to preach, they have to preach. Because of the fact that the people have to preach. Even if they have to preach, they have to preach. But they have to preach. They have to preach to the church. And so, they have to preach. But the apostles have to preach. One of the foundational responsibilities of a priest is to make sure the right doctrine is preached. An apostle is someone who is grounded in the scriptures and has a deeper understanding and knowledge of the scriptures and has a very good relationship with the Holy Spirit. So that the people have to preach. That's an apostle. And a correct doctrine. Because of the fact that you have to preach. And so, the reason is that apostles have the correct doctrine. Because of the fact that you have to preach. So that the false apostles come. The man who says he wants to preach. What's the person who says he wants to preach? The man who says he wants to preach, verses 14. "That we henceforth be no more children tossed to and thrown and carried about with every weed of doctrine by the canniness of men and the craftiness whereby they lag in way to deceive." That's an apostle. But because of the fact that you have to preach, what is your comment number one? To preach the title of apostle who defeats the truth of the church. But because of the fact that you have to preach the true foundation, the purpose, the language for preaching to the church. But because of the fact that you have to preach to the church. You have to preach to the church. Revival, to preach. Conference, to preach. Seminars, to preach. And so, because of the fact that you have to preach, maybe you have to preach to the church. Because of the fact that you have to preach. Whose problem? It's not the minister's problem, it's your responsibility. And so, you have to preach. You have to preach to the people. You have to preach to the people. And you have to preach the basic foundations. When you have chemistry, when you have history, the basic foundation. And so, you have to preach. Or you have to preach. Because of the fact that you have to study. In order to preach. Because of the fact that the people, they have to preach. The Bible is so deep. They have to preach. And even if you preach, you have to preach. The people have to preach for 100 years. So, I will not finish it. Because of the fact that you have to preach. You have to preach. You have to preach. You have to preach. And so, you have to preach. It's a living one. So, there is no way the people can preach the Bible in the church. Even if you have to preach, they have to preach different revelations completely. Because of the fact that it is the Holy Spirit who has to preach what we need to know at that particular time from the same scripture. So, we have one number. The apostles are three. Now, because of the fact that you have to preach. Because of the fact that you have to preach. And the verse 11. "And he gave some apostles and some prophets and some advisors, also to the evangelists, and some persons and teachers." So, what is the function of an evangelist? When you have to preach, it is a prayer. The people have to preach. The people have to preach. The people have to preach. You have to preach. So, when you have to preach, the people have to preach. And the apostles. You have to preach. Just because the people have to preach, and they have to preach. They have to preach. Then this is what they preach. When you have to preach, as the person who says, "I am an evangelist, so and so." And the people have to preach. Immediately, they have to preach. And the people have to preach. They have to preach. Everyone who has to preach, they have to preach. Who has to preach? Everyone who has to preach, they have to preach. They have to preach. Because of the fact that sometimes, our thinking capacity has a problem. Because of the fact that you have to preach. When you have to preach, you have to preach. And so, because of the fact that you have to preach. And so, because of the fact that you have to preach. They have to preach. They have to preach. I'm John Osborne. Because of the fact that you have to preach. I'm John Osborne. Because of the fact that you have to preach. The people have to preach. Even if you have to preach. Because of the fact that you have to preach. You have to preach. They have to preach. Hello? If protection, they have to preach. Maybe I have more problem. Maybe I don't believe in this doctrine. Okay, because of the fact that you have to preach. I don't believe in this doctrine. At least, if you have to preach, you have to preach. Okay, let's assume you have to preach. Because of the fact that you have to preach. The prophet of God. What is it? If that is true, because of the fact that you have to preach, the apostle, I'm Paul, the apostle. Paul, the people have to preach. Because of the fact that you have to preach. Who is a sucker? You have to preach to Paolo. When you have to preach, you have to preach. Why is it not working for these people? That's why I said. Because of the fact that you have to preach. You have to preach. So, because of the fact that you have to preach, you have to preach. Because of the fact that you have to preach. The church has to preach. So, I personally don't believe in changing names. Wherever you preach, the people have to preach. They have to preach. And the people have to preach. He will give you a new name. Because of the fact that you have to preach. Because of the fact that you have to preach. Because of the fact that you have to preach. Give to favor. Because of the fact that you have to preach. They have to preach. They have to preach. Give power, give glory. The people have to preach. They have to preach. Because of the fact that you have to preach. They have to preach. Hello? Because of the fact that you have to preach. Because of the fact that you have to preach. It will be a process. But what starts in all things? And do what you have to preach. Do the work of an evangelist. Do the work of a preacher. Make full proof of the ministry. Do the work of preaching. What is the priest's mission? What is the prayer of the church? Let it be full proof that whoever challenges you scripturally will not find fault with your teachings. Because of the fact that you have to preach. Make it full proof. You have to preach. You have to preach. Look at the scriptures. The people have to preach. So, because of the fact that you have to preach, each one of us, at a given moment, we can become evangelists. We can do the work of evangelists. I believe, another question. There's another. Acts 21, verses 8. It's a mistake, Acts chapter 21, 8, 8:5. Acts 21, chapter 21, verses 8. Verse 7. "And when we had finished our course from Tyre, we came to Torema. As what received Toremas and saluted the brethren and abode with them one day." Acts chapter 21, verse 7. "And the next day, we that were of force company departed and came unto Caesarea. And we entered the house of Philip, the evangelist, which was one of the seven, and abode with him, the same man, four daughters, vanges which did prophesy." So, Hapah, he, Luke, is the author of the book of Acts. So, Acts, Luke, is the author of the book of Acts. So, Hapah, when you have to preach, Paul, when you have to preach, when you have to preach, Philip, who was a man of service. He has to preach. You have to preach. You have to preach. Because of the fact that it is effective in our teachings. And you have to preach. You have to preach. So, out of the seven that were selected, Philip, Stephen, and Stephen. And Stephen, who has been a man of faith. So, you have to preach. Stephen, you have to preach. But you have to preach. Who is Philip? Paul, you have to preach. Because of Philip, who is the apostle. Who is the Christian Jesus. So, you have to preach. Who is Philip? Who is Philip, who has been a preacher, who has been a pastor? Who is a preacher? Who has preached? Philip, who has preached. He has to preach. So, who is Philip? So, who is Philip? Who is it specifically as an evangelist? That's why I said. Because of the fact that you have to preach. And they support the sources in the Bible. Because of the scriptures in front of the church. Philip, who has preached evangelism throughout. He has to preach. And establish the church. This Philip is the one of all evangelists and evangelized during the Etopian Unate. When you have to preach. You have to preach. Philip, who has to preach. Who is this man talking about? Philip, who has to preach. Who is the preacher? That Philip. The same Philip. I want to preach, Acts chapter 8, verses 5. Then I have to preach. Acts chapter 8, verses 5, in the same way. What's that one there for? 8, Acts chapter 8. You have to preach. Because of the fact that you have to preach. And you have to preach. So, we have to read from verses 1. I'm Acts chapter 7. Then you have to read chapter 8. So, today, we have to read verses 4. "Therefore, they that were scattered abroad with every preaching the word. Then Philip went down to the city of Samaria, preached Christ to them. And the people in one accord gave heed unto those things which Philip spoke, hearing and seeing the miracles which he did. For a great spirit came out to the all who came out of them that obsessed with them, and many meditating with parasses that were lured, were healed, and lost great joy in the city." So, you have to preach. Even if you have to preach. So, because of the fact that you have to preach. You have to preach. That's why I said. But, what's that one, verses 9? But there was a certain man called Simon, which before time in the same city used sorcery and bewitched the people of Samaria, giving out that himself was someone great, to whom they all gave heed from the list of the grace, saying, "This is the great power of God." And to him they had regard because that of a long term had bewitched them in sorcery. But when they believed on Philip preaching the things concerning the kingdom of God, they sinned. And the name of this God, there were both men and women. Then Simon himself believed. And he said, "I am." Because of the fact that you have to preach. Because of the fact that you have to preach. And Philip, who has to preach. Because of the fact that you have to preach. Why are you afraid? The church has to preach. And Philip, who has to preach. So, here, you have to preach. It is something that has been happening. So, you have to preach. You have to preach. Who are basically called to be evangelists, full stop. See what you have to preach. Because of the fact that you have to preach. Concerning men. Because of the fact that you have to preach. You have to preach. You have to preach. Because of the fact that you have to preach. So, the most important thing here is understand your gift. That's why I said. Understand what you are gifting. If you understand your gift, this man who has to preach, has to preach. Because of the fact that you have to preach. Yeah? You have to preach. You have to preach. Yeah, you have to preach. You have to preach. So, because of the fact that you have to preach. You have to preach. Because of the fact that you have to preach. Each one of us, who has to preach, has to preach. Who has to preach. Anyone who is called a leader, judgmental, has to preach. Because of the fact that much is given, much is required. So, if you have to preach. Hello? Because of the fact that you have to preach. You have to preach. Because of the fact that you have to preach. Because of the fact that you have to preach. Because of the fact that you have to preach. Yeah? Because of the fact that you have to preach. Because of the fact that you have to preach. Because of the fact that you have to preach. So, we will continue next Sunday. Then we will cover the Lord of evangelism. We will have a Sunday where we will preach evangelism. But we will say, "An evangelist is like a salesman of a camera." The basic responsibility of a preacher is to preach to the people who have faith in Christ. And thirdly, if you are an evangelist, you must be somebody who is willing to sacrifice in prayer. You must be somebody who is willing to sacrifice in fasting. Because of the fact that you have to preach. Because of the fact that you have to preach. You have to preach. Because of the fact that you have to preach. That's why I said. Because of the fact that you have to preach. Because of the fact that you have to preach. Because of the fact that you have to preach. Because of the fact that you have to preach. Because of the fact that you have to preach. Ah, that's the seminar that I have to preach. I have to preach. You have to preach. Because of the fact that you have to preach. Because of the fact that you have to preach. Because of the fact that you have to preach. Because of the fact that you have to preach. Because of the fact that you have to preach. Because of the fact that you have to preach.[1676.80]